Thirteen AM. Back down, roll call.
Chair, uh, Laura D'Amato, Valgaie.
Here.
Catherine Molly.
Here.
Wendy Curley.
Here.
Jonathan Dennis.
Here.
Alton Shepard.
Here.
David Tom.
Here.
Dwight Whistler.
Here.
Rizzo Bates. Nelson Begay.
Here.
Joshua Butler.
Here.
Russell Hale.
Present.
Leonard P.
Here.
Danny Simpson. Why you sitting in here?
Here.
Ed Binyali. Palmer Begay. Russell Begay. Charles Damon.
Present.
Kansas Mary Boy.
No.
Walter Bell. Roscoe Smith. Leonard Sochi. Mr. Chair, we have fourteen members present, constituents of Korn.
Fourteen members. Here. Let's, uh, bring the Navigati Committee to order. Today's Friday, January twenty-second. I'd like to ask, uh, June, she get Nelson, uh, do, do an application, please.
Thank you very much, Jeff, Chairman Bates, my dear colleagues of the Twenty-Second Nation Council, staff, and all our relatives in the gallery. Say a short prayer here this morning. Oh, great Spirit, you the most high. We acknowledge you this morning. We acknowledge you. We acknowledge that you are our creator. We are so thankful this morning. As we woke up, we looked at you, Father Sky, and we say, "Ya Te." Our first words that came out of our mouth were the delight that throughout the day as our creed. Oh, great Spirit, we acknowledge that you created the universe. And in the universe, you created Mother Earth. You adorn her with fire, water, air. And you blanket her with beautiful scenery. Washes, hills, mountains. You cover her with forage, trees. But we're so thankful, oh, great Spirit. And you also created our four-legged brothers. You created our brothers that live in the ground. You created our brothers that live in the waters. You created our brothers that fly in the sky. Your most beautiful creation is we, the five-thinger being. And as you created us, oh, great Spirit, the Good Book says that you created us in your own image. Thereby, we are holy people. And since you create a Mother Earth, we stand on holy grounds today. However, oh, great Spirit, even in your greatest creation, you let us go to do whatever we want, and in that, we have sinned. So, oh, great Spirit, we ask that you forgive us for our neck of the And, oh, great Spirit, today, as we greet the sun, as we greet the warm air, the warm sunshine from the sun, we gather again in this holy place and in this beautiful historic chambers. One only has to look at the murals on the walls to see where we have come from. That we are a great nation. And as we sit here in the chambers, we can hear our former leaders talking, debating. So likewise, today, oh, great Spirit, we ask for your guidance that we debate today. We ask, oh, great Spirit, to give us wisdom, guidance, clarity, to be good leaders, to show our people that we are leaders. We have a big issue in front of us today, oh, great Spirit. So I pray for our agenda and that we... What is best for our people, what is best for us today. And, oh, great Spirit, as I mentioned, Mother Earth, I also, at this time, bless all the mothers and women nation. For that is where we go every night. We go back into our mother's womb to get rejuvenated in a very special way, remember all the mothers, all the aunties, the grandmas. It is through them that we have survived, it is through them that we are a great nation. Without them, we would not have a great Navajo nation. So in a very special way, I pray for the mothers. And I pray for all the Navajo people. From the ones that are going to be born today to the elders. We're told as leaders that it is our responsibility for but the day that the baby is born, from their first cry, we're told that they cry out for life. Until that life is taken away, it is our responsibility as leaders. So let us remember that foremost. And, oh, great Spirit, we, in your creation, we are missing one thing. We are missing moisture. We miss the female rain, the gentle female rain that nourishes Mother, Mother Earth. It is so sad to see readily dry as we travel by there. What has happened, oh, great Spirit? What did we do? We're not only losing water and environment, we're also losing our children. We're losing our children. And I pray, oh, great Spirit, that today, through our prayers, through our prayers, that we all get back together, get back on the corn palmin road so that we can be a great nation again. For our visitors that come from afar, we thank you also, oh, great Spirit. We also thank our veterans, our veteran women that are across the great waters. Give them safety, safe return. And as they return, they pray that their body is, is whole. Oh, great Spirit, in my witnesses, I pray for many, I pray for much. However, oh, great Spirit, I pray for the day that we have a good debate on this floor. Be with my colleagues, be with our chair, and be with our staff, be with our prisoners, as we talk about an issue that is so important to all of us. And, oh, great Spirit, I ask our winged brother, the eagle, that he takes our prayers up into the sky, up into the heavens. It is so good to see our brother, the eagle, disappear into the heavens, and then we wait anxiously for the return. And when the eagle reappears, we know that our prayers, our offering, has been delivered. So, oh, great Spirit, I ask you in that way, pray to you in that way. And as my late father taught me how to close my prayer, I too close a prayer in that way. May there be beauty before us, may there be beauty behind us. May there be beauty below us, may there be beauty above us. May there be beauty all around us. And most importantly, most importantly, may there be beauty from within us. And with this, beauty is restored, beauty is restored, beauty is restored, indeed, beauty is restored in Jesus' name. Did you see, okay, that's what I'm gonna do then. And then, yeah, there, um, the shana ta, good morning. Yeah, there, and then. And then, the highest of cards, yeah, there, yeah, I, uh, shall be, yeah, I, uh, and then, um, so. And then, staff, good morning also. Then also, visitors, guests, I'm not gonna call you though. Good morning. Before we go on, uh, is there any announcement from the committee? No announcement? Hey, there's an announcement also. How does that, um, spread it? Again, Mr. Chairman, Speaker Bates, and my colleagues on the Navigati Committee. I'd like to make some introductions. Mr. Chairman, uh, sitting to the east side is, um, a grazing officer for Navajo Mountain Chapter, Lucille Pau Sacanizo, who is, who is also one of my constituents, if she can be, if she can stand and be recognized. Also, Mr. Chairman, also on the east side is two of my constituents as well. Uh, the Honorable Andrew McDonald Senior, former chairman of the Navajo Nation, and the former First Lady, Wanda McDonald. And also, in the chamber as well, on the north side, we have Senator, former Senator Jackson, as well as George in the chamber. Again, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Curley.
Mr. Chair. Okay, I want to make a brief announcement. Uh, today, I never really have a break, our proceedings here. Now, over that commission, Mr. Curley, uh, in the budget finance building, meeting room, to address one legislation that is, uh, red to the record, is not before Navajo Land Commission vote. And I would ask the members of the Navajo Land Commission to call to hand, so we can have the, uh, six members needed to address the legislation. So, this will occur at the time of the break, uh, just proceeding somewhere for lunch. Oh, yes, I see, Mr. Uh, Speaker Bates, Chairman, that's my announcement, also want to introduce, uh, uh, members, uh, three members of my committee. I want, first, I want to introduce Mr. Anderson Morgan, he's the, and his wife, Vernon Morgan. Mr. Morgan is, uh, the commander of Fort Apache A.C. Veterans Association. Mr. Morgan, would you stand, please, he's on the east side. We also have another important member from the Water Rights Chapter, he's a former chapter president, I think he's on the NHA board of commissioners. Um, Sean Fendell, he's, he's on the east side.
Mr. Speaker, I want my final last request, I have a little request. Last thing I have, if I could perform back to you. One thing that I, I feel that should be paramount, should be displayed to this building is a copy, a copy of replica of our, our treaty. They, we go to federal offices, state offices, they have their constitutions. We have our treaty. And our treaty should be displayed to this building in prominent position, somewhere in this building. I'm thinking back there, we can have our treaty written. So when we sit here and address our decisions, we have our treaty, my staring us in the face. Mr. Chair, I don't know if we need to say that, that's my request to you, Mr. Chair, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Albert Gay.
Good morning, Speaker, only go from Twenty-Second Nation Council, after you, but not so, I don't know, um, many dirty, uh, uh, so, sorry, that's a huge key, and, uh, yeah, I don't know, uh, I don't know, uh, good morning, uh, and also, do you know, uh, the, uh, the, uh, speaker? And, um, Monday, the twenty-fifth, uh, 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 water rights settlement, form, uh, 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 uh,
...meet with the US District Attorney's Office, Arizona District Regarding Federal Regulations, and we will be working on compromising federal jurisdiction on the Nahuatl Nation. And I appreciate that with the tribal liaisons. And also, Mr. Chair, I don't know if he's sitting here, he might be in the conference room, but we also have, actually Chair, Honorable, our former Chairman President Peterson's on the gallery also.
Mr. Damon.
Thank you Chair, Chair and members of the committee here, the people in the audience from Arizona. We do hold interest from New Mexico to all those people that are from New Mexico. Could you please stand up so we can hear it? Thank you.
Mr. Winslow.
Thank you Chair, members of the committee, those present in the gallery, our staff. I'd like to have a number of people be recognized. We have from my Zipulgin region and communities, we have Evelyn Simonson, Fern Benali, Leonard Gorman, first CEO, Alsa Johnson, and then we have some other representatives, all of whom I don't want their names, including some elders here in the chambers from my region. I'd like to ask them all to stand and be recognized.
We have a young gentleman here, his name is Kell Curry, representative for Tom Udon, who works outside.
Hello, the China, hello, Niki.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes, Chair. Hello, never not talk to you, let me talk to you. She don't, 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 Red Red House.
Thank you, I'm, yes, I'm here. I think I asked, they're on the way to the South Conference Room with Norman McGee, a member of the Board of Legends Supervisor, she don't. Hello, the way I'm, 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 fifteen in favor, opposed? Motion carries, Mr. Shepherd.
Okay, I'm, 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 again, it's just a confirmation for Director of Ethics and Rules. I should, I'm, 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 I'm.
Mr. Shepherd, motion, there are second, second by Mr. Pete. Question regarding amendment. I see none, let's proceed to vote, please raise your hand. Twelve, opposed? Three opposed? Motion carries? Is there any others? Okay, I see none, which two addition? It's to the new, new business? Let's go ahead and proceed to make motion, all those in favor? Please raise your hand, accepting the agenda for state. Opposed? Opposed? Fifteen in favors or opposed? Members of the Nahuatl Committee, you accept your agenda for today. So let's proceed to number four, receiving approved journal. Your journal for today. Give more attention later.
The red, I'm, 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 okay, with that, let's proceed to number five, receiving report, updating report from Department of Interior Representative. There's four people, I believe, that are here. Go ahead and proceed and introduce yourself. And let us know what the report's gonna be about, so proceed.
Good afternoon, my name is Randy Chandler, I'm the Area Manager for the Bureau of Reclamation Office of Phoenix, Arizona, and I led up the federal team negotiations for the settlement.
Good morning, my name is Pamela Williams, I'm the Director of the Secretary of Indian Water Rights Office in Washington DC.
Good morning, my name is Vanessa Rayhod, I'm Senior Counselor, Solicitor, Hillary Thompson in Washington DC.
Good morning, everybody, my name is Dion Kilzback, and I am Counselor to the Assistant Secretary of Indian Affairs in Washington DC. The acting Assistant Secretary of Indian Affairs is Del Laveter, a member of the Crow Tribe, and he asked me here today to speak with the delegation of an Nahuatl Nation and provide some information and clarification of the settlement. Our report is really just that, to engage in a question and answer with the delegation, and also to report that we understand that the Crow Tribe has approved a vote in favor of the settlement as of yesterday, which I'm sure many of you folks are aware of. And really leave it up to Speaker to engage with us through the process of decorum in a respectful manner. I wanted to send a message also from our DC office that the Assistant Secretary is fully committed to addressing and comprehensively selling Indian water rights on behalf of Indian tribes, including the Nahuatl Nation. And it's part of the United States' responsibility. And my position as the Counselor incoming to Washington DC was brought on specifically to address Indian water rights issues. By way of background, and I'd like to talk a little bit about my background, as I stated, I'm a member of the Roman Cheyenne Tribe in Montana. And this week is significant for us. Some 136 years ago, the United States Southern Calvary, being led by General George Armstrong Custer, engaged in a campaign to remove my ancestors in the Setay and the Oklahota to a reservation in Oklahoma. My ancestor, I'm a direct descendant of Woolhead, Dolknife, and Little Wolf, we engaged in a battle at the Little Bighorn, as the anniversary's approaching on June 25th. And right now, we are celebrating our victory, the battle where Longhair was killed. And the importance of that historical victory for the Cheyenne and the Sioux is something that's ingrained in us at a very young age. And unfortunately, I'm not able to be there with my children and my family, because I've been asked by my boss, who's a member of the Crow, to fulfill a responsibility on behalf of the United States because of my commitment to Indian people and Indian water. The history between the Crow and Cheyenne is significant, because as I said in the battle, members of the Crow Nation of Salaga were scouts for General George Armstrong Custer. And so, he, my boss, is a member of the Crow. And so, we've been ingrained as well with the nuances of historical enemy feuds. Unlike the Crow, later on, we were forced to Oklahoma. And unlike the Crow, the Crow were allowed to maintain their reservation of significant proportion, not as significant as the Dene, but still significant since we claim the Roman Cheyenne Southeastern Montana and Wyoming Colorado as our homeland. So now, through our historical expedition back home, we were able to reestablish our reservation. Unfortunately, we are adjacent to the Crow Nation, and I say unfortunately because right now, I believe it is fortunate, because without the relationship that I've been able to foster with my boss, a member of the Crow Nation, I would not be here today. So I want to provide a little bit of background in a historical context, and the committee of Interior has to addressing Indian issues, but more particularly in this instance, Indian water issues. And so with that, I would like to turn the floor back over to Speaker, Donnie Hayes, so that we could engage at a discretion, of course, with questions and answers from our end.
I have four people listed to do the report, are you all there on making the report at this time?
Yes, I am.
With that, members of the committee, I need a motion. That's it? Motion to submit a report. Mr. McGee? Mr. Buck? Any questions for the representatives? Mr. Wilson?
Chair, members of the committee, it's not, it's not a question, it's a comment that we have litigation against Department of Interior, it certainly may not be appropriate for us to entertain essentially a report from them such when we're dealing with settlement agreement, which would essentially alleviate that litigation that we have with them. So just wanted to make that as a comment.
Mr. Curry? It's very interesting, I observed, as the chair has said, historically, this report indicated that the federal government took punitive measures against invasions that did not agree to their policies. And I hope that the federal government is not, does not practice the same measures against nations that don't necessarily agree with the policy as well. I really don't know what policy of representatives of the federal government had to report, but it would be very interesting to hear that, and I didn't hear that at all. Mr. Chair.
Chair. Mr. Speaker and Chair, and members of the Nahuatl Committee, guests, presenters, I was hoping to hear a report from the Interior, but it was more like a question and answer session. I don't know if that's appropriate or inappropriate. And Mr. Chair, I'd like to pose a question to our legal counsel, possible DOJ, since we do have a lawsuit pending, if we could communicate with them on this particular subject? And if we can, I believe that no lawyers or attorneys from both parties should be in attendance. Mr. Speaker and Mr. Chair.
Mr. McCool? Mr. Curry? Mr. Chair, at one point in time, I was in Phoenix, some of us were here, I'd be in town Kyle, and some of these folks that are here today, I also, as well. Well, I'm sure there's frustration on the part of federal people to the lack of progress that the Crow Nation, the Nahuatl Nation was making with respect to the agreement. It seemed to be, it indicated to me that it's the interest of these folks here that an agreement be fashioned. I just wondered if that's their position, what I need to hear from. I'm very interested to see what their position is with respect to the agreements. Mr. Chair. Thank you. Presenter?
I just want to be clear that you're working here to address the bill that's pending before the delegation, and we understand that you can deliberate it. Our position is, you know, to provide assurance to our commitment of implementation, in that, in that vein, it's a nation decision. We're not here to try to sell anything, we're not here to try to sway, we're here just simply to provide information and clarification if there are questions. And we, you know, as I stated, from Washington DC, our commitment is unwavering. We have a commitment from the top down, in terms of the Obama Administration, Secretary Salazar, Deputy Secretary Hayes, as well as the Assistant Secretary, Del Laveter, Indian Affairs, as well as the Commissioner from the Bureau of Reclamation, Mike Conant.
Mr. McCool?
Mr. Chair, members of council, good morning. As I understand the question, correct me if I don't understand it, it has to do with whether or not this is a proper discussion, given that there's concerns that there's litigation around the issues here? Do I have that correct? To give an accurate answer, I need a clear understanding of the question. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, Speaker, members of the Nahuatl Committee, members of council. Okay, Mr. McCool, restating my question. I'm wondering if it's inappropriate or appropriate to converse with pending lawsuits towards the federal government from the Nahuatl Nation that we converse? And I think in the law, it says that we could converse, but without lawyer, both parties' lawyers in attendance? And from here on, it wouldn't matter if we proceed with this or not, and also, I appreciate David Whitis' remarks and comments on this issue also.
Mr. McCool?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Senator Jenny, when you institute lawsuit, both parties file their actions, and anytime during the progress of that lawsuit, if parties can arrive at a settlement, they're free to do so, and in fact, courts prefer that. And so in this case, this is, this body is the prime, one of the prime deciding bodies with respect to the settlement that's being discussed, not the litigation. This is a settlement that is an outgrowth of ongoing litigation, but if you will, represent- that is an outgrowth of ongoing litigation. But if you will, represents more or less a timeout in the pursuit of legal arguments as to who's right, who's wrong, et cetera, and allows for a compromise or settlement solution to be arrived at without having to go to the court to decide. And so this conversation is about that type of settlement. Of course, an agreement can't be reached if only one party is there. As to the presence of the attorneys, there's no legal strategy on either side being revealed or discussed. The attorneys are aware of the implications of terms and conditions that might be arrived at in that settlement and its impact on their respective clients, and they can inform their respective clients accordingly. So I don't see anything prohibitive that the attorney should be here. No attorney is turning over its case plan, its legal theory, et cetera, to the other attorneys, or vice versa. But rather, what's on the table is what's before you, which is a settlement. And the settlement is a response to litigation, but it is not a litigation. And so a discussion involving all parties and all informed parties are essential to both sides. So if it is agreed to, there is fully informed consent. No one can say I didn't know.
So, Mr. Speaker, I would like to interject. If we are going to settle this then, or are we receiving a report?
Mr. McCool. I'm under the impression, Mr. Chair, Mr. Senator, I'm under the impression that an aspect of the report is the settlement. I hope I'm wrong in that. Respectfully, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I would like to yield my time over to Delegate Witherspoon.
Mr. Witherspoon.
Chair, members of the committee, Mr. McCool, the settlement in Section 11.9 has dismissal of pending court case. And in the exhibit, it has dismissal with prejudice of the first, second, third, fourth, and fifth claims of relief, as well as the sixth, with the allowance for us to be able to potentially refine. We do have litigation with them, so I think my comfort was to certainly report in something that would alleviate them from essentially dismissal of the litigation that we have with them. Receiving a report from them is probably important.
Mr. Dobbins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the committee, the Interior Department. I'm with my colleagues here. I'm waiting for a report. But let me tell you, Senate Bill 2109, the council last Friday, at exactly 4:37 PM, acted on that legislation. I was the sponsor of the legislation, legislation tracking number 189-12. Council debated that all afternoon. At the end of the day, 13 in favor of my bill, which says, 13 in favor zero oppose. The council took a strong position opposing the bill. We do not support that bill. Unfortunately, I don't know where it's at. I don't know if it's still in the Speaker's office or on the President's desk. That message has not been conveyed to your office, and that is probably why we're here. I don't know who we're going to, maybe Water Rights Commission, in hopes of supporting us the other way. At least, that's what I believe. And I think many of the people here believe that. The obvious belief, you came to go to that for the Water Rights Commission's position. So I'm only being frank with you on what our belief is. As long as there's no report, no real report, then you leave us no choice but to just fill in the blanks. So that's what we're doing. That's what my people are doing. So take this message back. Our legislation may never be forwarded, it may be vetoed, but we will not hesitate to vote against that bill again. Ashon de, ashon de, shidane, ashon de. Ashon de, o yuwa de de. Ashon de, shak shen de baan, atso. De no sen, ha da iste, yar ashon de. So with that, I'd like to send that alarm, have that message sent back to your boss, to you. Mr. Chair.
Mr. McCool.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is my understanding that the members of the department are here to explain to the council what happens if the agreement is approved by the nation, not to discuss the terms of what's good, what's bad in the agreement, but the process that will occur afterwards. And in some respects, we can all see that that's irrelevant information because how long will it take? How many people review it, et cetera? What are the standards they're going to use to review it? Much of the concerns of the truck will be taken into account after we do, et cetera. On the other hand, if the council does not feel that that's relevant at this time, it may be even a bit premature. But again, it's the council's decision. Mr. Chair.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, my colleagues, the Navi KIT committee. I made the motion to accept the report as being aware of the folks from the Department of the Interior of the United States have made a report to their ability. And this is what they are here to share with us. They did share it with us. And so, but other situations that we're promoting and highlighting some of the issues that are pending, and to my thinking, that's not the issue here. But the report is made, and that's the main thing that we're having here. If that's what it is, then that's what it is. And so we just need to accept what they provided, and we just need to move on and address some other issues. That's on the agenda here. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bates.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the, honorable members of the committee. Let me just correct my own knowledge statement. It doesn't go to the president. It's a committee, Navi KIT legislation. It goes to council. Council speaks on behalf of the nation, not Navi KIT. So it's destined for council, and that's when council decides on it. It was only a committee action. Now, attorneys, you can say yes or no on it, but that's how I read it. It was stamped council. It goes to council. It's treated as a council legislation. So having said that, I certainly can understand the Interior's position. They obviously cannot take the position on this matter. They're here to, I'm of the understanding, just from what they've indicated thus far, is that in the event this legislation goes through at the federal level and things kick in as to their involvement, as to how to make the terms within the settlement become a reality, that's their job. So based on that, my question is, within the settlement, it has a dollar to do tied to a waterline development within Arizona. If you could explain to me how that process works. There's also a deadline tied to that dollar to do. And that deadline basically says, if you don't get the money together by this date, this whole deal is off. So explain to me how the Interior is involved in giving the money together, and then how the Interior, if they get the money together, how the Interior implements that appropriation to get that supposed waterline to become a reality is my question. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Shepherd.
Okay, I should now, now to question privilege. Mr. Dobbins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question of privilege. I don't know since the report is being sponsored by all of us, the Navi KIT legislative council. When a legislation is considered a government-to-government, this government to the federal government, is not the Navi KIT committee sufficient to act on behalf of the nation?
Mr. McCool, Mr. Chair, Mr. Dobbins, members of the committee. First answer is the attorney. Actually, it depends. But in terms of this particular measure, which I'm sure is what you have in mind, I've asked one of the attorneys to find the signature page for the president. Clearly, he cannot sign that unless the council approves this. So it's a council resolution. Cannot get on the agenda. It goes through council meetings, this committee. Then council, it cannot go to the president. Unless council votes a yes. If it's no, it dies. Once they vote a yes, I'm presuming that as president, like many agreements and contracts I've seen, there's usually a signature line that says, it's a resolution authorizing the president to sign, certified by the speaker, that it is duly adopted by council, and then it goes to the president to execute. You cannot execute it without that permission from the council to do so. That's my understanding of the general order of consideration. If you give me a little bit of time, I'll look through this document and see if I can find that. In fact, that's the way this is set up as well. Mr. Dobbins, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Shepherd.
see, there was 14 of us that were here that chose to debate this issue as a recommendation to the Navi commission council. I think the vote was unanimous as far as the people that were on the floor that took an interest on behalf of the people. But we still have to deal with that, the council. And also, this report has written as on the agenda. I was hoping to hear more. But I do believe that I would rather cite within the settlement. It hasn't been enacted yet. So I would be cautious as continuing to deliberate even further. And I think we can probably do that once we entertain the legislation that's in blue business, item A. So at this time, I'd like to go ahead and table this report and go straight right into the substance of the reason why we're here today. But I'll do this first motion is to table this report. And we can also bring that back after we have dealt with item A on blue business. Then I think we can ask questions with, you know, from there. But I'd like to, since we didn't receive any report, and this is more of a dialogue with what happens if the agreement is settled. We haven't gotten to that point yet, so we can't, we're just shooting a dark here asking questions. So I would like to make that motion to table this report, and just go right, and then a subsequent motion will follow to go to item A. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Shepherd, motion to table this report, seconded by Mr. Sebson. Let's go ahead and see to the vote. Table in this report, both in favor, which are they?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven.
Okay, table the motion, please.
Oh, sorry. I just wanted to respond to a few of the questions and comments, if that's all right. To Delegate Kiril, his first question started off on whether or not the United States, particularly our office administration, engaged or advocated the punitive practices of injuring or punishing Indian tribes, or assimilation-type policies, I imagine. And I, I'm going to say that that's a no. The United States currently is fully committed to fulfilling its large responsibility to Indian tribes and committed to carrying that through. And ultimately, what we understand is that it's us understanding that the nation is sovereign and has its own decision process, and that it's up to the nation to decide. The assimilation policies of the past, of which we're all familiar of, we're trying to take a different approach, obviously, now in working with tribes to better feel that commitment to the delegate representative, Mrs. Finale. We weren't requested by the Water Commission to be here, but we did understand that this body took a vote not to support the legislation. And I think that from our offices in DC, we wanted to provide information, our clarification, if the delegation had questions for us. we wanted to provide information or clarification if the delegation had questions for us. And in that light, so that we understood where the nation was coming from. And if we could provide any clarification that the delegation felt that needed some, needed some questions answered. And so we understood as well that the Hopi tribe, you know, acted in similar fashion with their elected officials. So again, I want to emphasize that, you know, we're committed to answering questions and let be really upfront and not trying to hide the ball and really have a frank discussion. The last, a few weeks ago, there was the groundbreaking ceremony at the Navajo Gala. And I want to speak to this gentleman's question on implementation. The United States Department of Interior is committed to fully implementing any action that the nation approves and that Congress approves. And we wanted to write assurances that we're gonna follow through. For example, the Navajo Gala, which isn't this, I'm gonna use that as an example to kind of paint a picture of where we're coming from. The United States has committed, over the next three years, one hundred eighty million dollars for that pipeline project. Sixty million dollars in twenty twelve, sixty million twenty thirteen, and sixty million twenty four. It's a hundred million dollars of mandatory funding. And that's to accomplish the pipeline project. But also, in twenty twenty, another five hundred million dollars of mandatory funding, which would be a hundred and twenty million dollars over the next five years after that. So what we have here is a commitment to the San Juan settlement for a delivery system of Navajo water to accomplish what the nation decided, as well as the United States and as well as the city of Galle. And that amount, the five hundred plus the hundred and eighty million dollars is, you know, close to a billion dollars of mandatory funding. And that is essentially already money that's committed. It's there. We're just waiting for, you know, the planning to take place. And so the commitment from the United States Department of Interior to fulfill these obligations and for the Navajo Nation to exercise to the fullest extent their rights. The United States recognized that that's a decision that the United States and the nation agreed upon. And so when we talk about if and when in the event, you know, the Navajo open, they're Colorado River, so it takes place. We have that same mentality, the same commitment to fulfilling the implementation values as described in this settlement. And I want to move to the fourth question. Fourth, yes, fourth question. And also, let me apologize as well. I believe that the, as it stated in the amendments, as the delegation has informed us that of this report. And I am apologetic because when we had contacted, you know, the delegation, we wanted to talk about this and just have a discussion on anything that the delegation wanted to talk about. But our report surrounded essentially the information that we received in regards to the vote as Ms. Finali described, also as well as the Hopi vote that took place in similar fashion. And but also to report that as of yesterday, the Hopi tribe approved supporting the water for the Navajo Hopi, Little Call, Colorado River. So I didn't, I don't mean to offend this sovereign body, legislative body of the Navajo Nation. And I send sincere apology. And I don't mean to offend this nation's legislative bodies. So let me apologize. I do not mean to offend, so. That's what I have to... Okay, and for the funding of this settlement, I'm gonna turn it over to our solicitor, Vanessa Raycon, to talk about that because she knows a little details about that. Thank you.
Under the current settlement, as it stepped forth in the bill due before the Senate, appropriations for both the Navajo groundwater projects and the Hopi groundwater projects will be made through appropriations over a ten-year period. As Dion mentioned, in the Navajo Gala settlement in New Mexico, at the last minute, Congress was able to appropriate mandatory funding. That's not usually how water settlements get funded. And under this one, as it's currently structured, it will be appropriations over a ten-year period to build all of the groundwater projects contemplated under the settlement agreement. In addition, as money gets appropriated and goes into funds to fund both of the groundwater projects, some of that money will be able to be utilized for the development and planning of the water systems so that hopefully by the time the full amount is appropriated by Congress, the Bureau of Reclamation with the tribe can begin to actually build out those projects. And in addition, I think it's also important to note, as one of the main parts of this water settlement, none of the tribe's rights or waivers will ever become effective until that money is appropriated. And that's to ensure that Congress lives up to its responsibilities and the United States does to the tribes and that we don't compromise the tribe's rights during that process.
Now, I think that covers all the questions that we've had. Four, wait one. Can you say to me what I didn't answer all the questions? That's what I have. So back to you, Kate. Thank you. Ms. Finali.
Again, thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the council and Department of Interior and others. I'm being asked to ask that you speak a little louder so the elders in the audience in the gala could hear you. But beyond that, I find it hard and I'm sure my colleagues and my people find it very difficult to trust our trustee. I'm going to cite one example, and that's just one. Navajo Indian Irrigation Project. Are you familiar with that project?
Yes.
That agreement says, "We will allow Navajo Nation, will allow the use of their water all the way up to Albuquerque. In return, the federal government said they will build a canal system to help us with our farm in the northern part of our nation." Well, Albuquerque received their water. They get to swim in their swimming pool backyard. They have beautiful golf courses and beautiful water parks. Navajo Nation still looking to you to fulfill your promise on that. You haven't done that. And the last visit by your boss here, he promised us this. "I will accommodate a meeting for this discussion." You remind him that he promised us that. So you can't blame us for doubting you. And I don't want your time wasted. When you're here, I want to appeal to you to tell the Bureau of Indian Affairs, Indian Education, Mr. Emerson, a skeet in Albuquerque office, to fill our school, the Hoto boarding school, at the site of the community's wishes. Our school has been on the number one priority list for several years. And he refuses to build it, just a quarter, a mile south of the existing site. And I have been pleading this case to everybody coming from Washington, D C, and including McKay and Kyle when they came to Tuba City. They too promised that they will do something for my school. So today, don't waste your time. At least do something about my school, my children's school. But in the meantime, while NIP is not, while that has not been addressed and funded, we probably will never trust you, our trustee. Thank you.
Let's go ahead and proceed to vote this second report. All those in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, back. Twelve, thirteen, sixteen. Sixteen in favor, zero in favor, sixteen opposed. We took action on the report. Thank you. Mr. Shepherd.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. As earlier, as I noted to you, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the floor rules for new business item A legislation, zero two three zero dash one two. Thank you.
Is there a second? Question, very good. Suspension. Motion, party? Members of the committee, do you have a feeling to suspend it down? So let's proceed to vote, suspending the floor rules, going to two thirty. All those in favor, each hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. Oppose. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, back. Twelve. Okay, suspension, fail, fail, seven in favor, twelve opposed. Let's proceed to the next report. B, Mr. Utter. Hi, machine, Utter.
Yeah, Mr. Speaker. Hey, yeah, huh, Mr. Speaker. Could you hear that?
I know.
Louder, Mr. Speaker. I don't know that this goes any louder. I'm about to chew on this mouthpiece. Is that good enough? You're saying louder, louder back there. This will be difficult. Gotcha. That's for the leaders who are here from the old days. And I think Mr. Bluehouse is here too. I think he's somewhere over there, Mr. Speaker. I don't think he was acknowledged earlier. Could we ask him to stand, please? And Irma, is Irma Bluehouse, she came back in too. Could we have her stand too, please?
Yeah, that's, 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 that's. Don't ask me, don't ask me. The Navajo Washington, the Water Code Administration, that's my name. Don't ask me, don't ask me. She, 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 she. I could, Celtic, don't English, that's my name. No, no, Swedish, don't Dutch, that's my Chinese. I could, ever, but I got it, that's my name. I don't, she, she, I don't know, she, she, Christine Finali, yeah. Look, then, I got Christine, she, 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 she. I don't, Elsie, don't Wayne, Finali, but my, don't, but she, she, look, then, I got, and.
Mr. Speaker, can you see, there you are, hard to see with my glasses on.
Mr. Utter, let you know that you are shot on that. Okay. Now, let's reveal.
Thank you, sir. I have to ask your indulgence today, Mr. Speaker. My presentation, I can't say is really my presentation. Over a hundred people helped prepare this as late as this morning. I've been up all night answering questions, changing pictures and so on and so forth. I think I counted at least twenty people in here who helped prepare this and another sixty or eighty or so that are not here today. Again, not to everybody who helped contribute to this. I speak for my Navajo family, my in-laws of all kinds. We're going to have another one in October. The elders who are here, I appreciate my in-laws who are elders here today and future generations, I'm speaking for them as well. I have been asked pointedly not long ago to declare to you that I do not speak for water resources, and I agree with that. I am speaking today for the Navajo people and my family as they have asked me to. Christine, George Kirk, yeah. My dad was in the Marine Corps for thirty years. He fought alongside code talkers. He fought alongside Navajos in Korea. He fought alongside Navajos in Vietnam twice. And I know we have a code talker here today, and we have other veterans and veterans' families. I talked to the police here today, some of them, I think most of them are veterans. I would like us all to ask the veterans and the veterans' families to please stand up. I would like to show them my appreciation coming from my heart and my father being, my late father being in service for thirty years. Please. Please, veterans and veterans' families, stand up and be recognized. Thank you very much. We'll get right into today's theme. This theme comes from the Torah, the Jewish Bible, the Old Testament. Some of you know is from the Hebrew Bible. The first to present his case seems right till another comes forward to question him. And that's a hard translation to do. The focus today is on the settlement agreement as opposed to the very similar settlement act and which the people now have more familiarity with. I start with a first problem example, quantified valuable projects hidden, ignored, and waived without any informed inquiry or consent by council or the people. Now, I chose this one from Loop. I know it's hard to see. And again, pardon me, I've been up most of two days. That's Loop down there. And what you see is a 20,000 acre farm proposed by DIA and Quantify as a reasonable water rights quantification for winters' rights. In one location, 105,000 acre feet of water, that's $420 million worth of water at today's ownership prices. I presented this in Oak Springs to the Resources Committee. No one ever heard about it. Or the larger report that it's part of. This big box here, this big box right here is full of reports relating to this and other things. I once tried to present this just by mentioning it. And this was about ten years ago. And John Leaky demanded I be fired for divulging confidential information. But I first found it in a public library. I found it was confidential only on the Navajo Nation and hidden only from Navajo leaders and the Navajo people. Now, this is not directly relevant to LCR. But like I said, we did this by committee. And some folks wanted it known that there was another proposed farm, many of them actually. This one in Lichee for about 30,000 acre feet. And Rainbow Mesa across the lake, another 30,000 acre feet. The retail value of those waters is about at least $120 million. Now, the first example I've given you breaks the settlement agreement ice this morning. But let's pause and learn the relationship between the Act, that's S2109, and the agreement, and the relationship's origin. Now, I have Delegate Roscoe Smith's name up there. I think it falls off the screen. Brandon Benali is my tech guy. You notice he's a lot younger than I am, so he's a lot smarter than I am and can handle these technical issues. But when Delegate Smith asked this seemingly simple question, having been a professor before, it came to my mind, I often learn that the simple is the most profound. He came up with a PhD dissertation in his question. The origin of the relationship between the settlement act and the settlement agreement is the US Constitution. And the relationship goes back to treaty times. So please break out, you all have handouts. We have to ask you to use them, just like a college teacher. You have two treaties. You were talking about the treaties earlier. You have photocopies in your handouts of the original 1868 and 1949 treaties in the packet that was given to you. While you're digging those out, I'll make note of a couple things. We'll have two slides to fill the time. Of 22 tribes in Arizona, only one has a treaty with the United States, and that's Navajo. It has two. This is Sam McGee at the National Archives in Washington DC in the late 1990s. And he's smiling because he just found a grandfather's or great-grandfather's signature on Notzosana. And Notzosana Gajet is to his right, the original 1849 treaty. Though the Navajo Nation attorneys before Mr. Pollock employed the treaties in their filings on LCR water rights, Kyle's S2109 settlement act, an agreement, incorporates only one treaty, the 1944 treaty with Mexico. It seems the treaties are purposely left out because the agricultural purpose is a big concern. Agricultural use of water is very large. In the American West, in Arizona in particular, more than 80% of the water goes to agricultural uses. So when that's claimed as a purpose, one's water claims jump considerably. The US Constitution, Article II, the US Constitution, Article II, says, "The President shall have power by and with the advice and consent of the Senate to make treaties, provided two-thirds of the senators present concur." So said concurrence is called ratification. We're working on some technical things. The 1868 treaty has a heading in its official registration with the United States, "Treaty Between the United States of America and the Navajo Tribe of Indians, concluded June 1, 1868, and ratification advised July 25, 1868." If you look at the next to last page of your 1868 treaty, that's what it looks like. It says, "In executive session, so on and so forth, July 25, 1868, resolved, two-thirds of the senators present concurring that the Senate advise and consent to the ratification of the treaty between the United States and the Navajo Indians." And that's, of course, the June 1 treaty. Now, skip forward to S2109, page 35. You may or may not have it with you, that's okay. I'm quoting from Section 101, "Ratification of the Navajo-Hopee Little Colorado River Water Rights Settlement Agreement." It's like a modern-day treaty. The United States ended treaty-making with tribes in 1871 officially. The very last treaty between a tribe and the United States that was ratified occurred ten weeks after the Navajo Treaty of 1868. So you barely made it in the window. The last treaty ten weeks later was with the Nez Perce. For the 1849 treaty, see the second page for the President's announcement of the treaty's ratification. And you can do that. You can see a similar ratification on the 1849 treaty, which has Millard Fillmore's name on the front. Navajo could have had 1849, an 1849 priority, or claimed an 1849 priority of significant water rights in New Mexico, but was never told about it. When I first came here in 1999, although I came to the reservation first time in 1956, when I came to work here in 1999, I didn't find a soul who knew that Navajo had an 1849 treaty. And I didn't find anyone who knew that Navajo could have claimed 1849 rights in New Mexico. And that still has not happened. I don't know if Irvin Kiswood is in the room, but I saw him earlier. I'll refer to him, maybe he can hear me in the back room. Also in New Mexico, in the settlement in New Mexico, the canons of construction, that's rules of interpretation, were waived in the settlement agreement. And that shocked me. I let a few people know, I let Irvin know. Let me read to you basically what the canons are. The rules of interpretation in case there's a conflict between a tribe and other parties over a treaty or legislation or even federal regulations. "If there is a vague treaty, agreement, legislation, or regulation with a course of dealing that, at best, can be characterized as ambiguous, we believe the courts must rule as a matter of law in accordance with the canons of construction," again, rules of interpretation, "that liberally favor Indians." That's the New Mexico Court of Appeals saying that. And to have waived, to have waived the canons of construction in the New Mexico settlement is like this. We've all bought new cars, most of us have. It would be like the salesman saying, "Oh, wait, before I give you the keys, I'm going to cut out your seat belts and take your spare tire." And you say to him, "Why are you going to do that?" He said, "Well, it doesn't matter. There's no guarantee you'll ever need them." When Mr. Kiswood and others made the inquiry, "Why are you waiving, why are you waiving the canons of construction?" DOJ told them what that car dealer told them. In my analogy, "There's no guarantee you'll ever need them." Right now, Navajo is in court in New Mexico on that very settlement. They need them. Or Navajo needs them. So you can't see everything up there, but I will do my best to fill it in. So what's this agreement in principle thing? Again, you're seeing reflected here the committee nature of this presentation, which I'm responsible for presenting. That's the single paragraph expression of support for the settlement act and agreement, signed by Attorneys Pollock and Hoover. People have mixed that up. It's three pages with all the signatures. It's not the settlement agreement. It's just when the attorneys said, "We're agreeing in principle." And I know Hopey got a little confused about that. I want us to take a little mental pause here and get a sense for the statewide overview of water and power. I also want to thank Jack Ahastin. This is his. He does such a good job for all of us, taking complex situations and issues and making them understandable. What we see here is what's taking place in Arizona and has for decades. Navajo coal is mined on the Navajo Nation Black Mesa, goes to Navajo Generating Station, which is not Navajo. 25% of the power goes across the state and pumps water out of the Colorado River through CAE, 336 miles through Phoenix and Tucson. And it keeps Phoenix and Tucson alive. I have talked to some economists I know elsewhere in the state. And even though the value of Navajo Generating Station was recently set at $18 billion, I think that's miniscule. The value to everybody down here is in the hundreds of billions. Navajo Generating Station is carrying on its back, or I should say Navajo is, about, I've been told by economists, two-thirds of the economy of the whole state of Arizona. How much of that value is Navajo getting? Yeah, my family's quite concerned, as are many people in this room, that it's getting next to nothing. Okay, I thought we'd toss in the famous Blue Springs. It just comes out of the Red Wall and drawl of limestones, flows right into the lower Little Colorado River gorge. And it's 12 miles up from the mouth of the Colorado River. Up top, it says, "The Arizona Department of Water Resources reports, on average, 340,000 acre feet per year flows into the Colorado River from the Little Colorado River." That's 340,000 football fields a foot deep. A very dependable, this is the most dependable flow that anyone's identified for me in the entire Colorado River region in Arizona. A very dependable 160,000 acre feet per year. Now, let's get a handle on that. That is 2,055 gallon barrels per minute. 2,055 gallon barrels per minute gushing out of the rocks and flowing into the Little Colorado River and then the main stem. It all goes to free use downstream. Now, water values are something I specialize in. I marketed water, leased it for the Abupai Prescott Tribe when I worked on their water rights settlement. I was their principal negotiator, not their attorney, but principal reservation negotiator. Our attorney was Bruce Babbitt till he became Interior Secretary. The value of the Blue Springs water in Arizona, the ownership value, is $1 billion. Main stem water is going for $6,000 an acre foot. In Las Vegas, it's $1.6 billion because they're willing to pay no less than $10,000 an acre foot for a long-term lease or ownership of water, which is a hard thing for them to do. This just gives us a sense where Blue Springs is. Here's where it meets the Colorado River. The Little Colorado is right here. It flows north, makes a turn, and then the main stem comes down here. Blue Springs is sacred to traditional Navajos and Hopis. I have been here seven times, and I'm embarrassed to say, I accepted the Park Service description when they explained to me that Blue Springs rises on National Park Service land. That is not true. You just saw it on the map. It's four miles inside the Navajo Nation boundary. So it rises entirely on the Navajo Nation. Now, this is a view from across the river. The Little Colorado River is in flood, right here. It's coming from the left and flowing into the main stem and going south. So you see it's pretty rugged territory. It's a long way down there. And the water changes from the blue with the high total dissolved solids to this floodwater that we're most used to see. Blue Springs is included. And I've heard that several times regarding the settlement. And family says, "All right, answer that, Jack. Is it included?" And I had to say, "Well, not really. There's no quantification. There's no priority date. There's no actual ownership. There's no ability to use it." But others do, both here and downstream. Now, I'm tossing in these subject matters because I was asked to, just one after another at the beginning to save you folks' time and cover a breadth of subject matters. The Handbook of Federal Indian Law says, "Allottees' water rights are not subject to abandonment or forfeiture." Most important, allottees succeed by the allotments from reservation land to tribal priority of res-creation date, of the reservation creation date. What that means is that if an allotment is taken right- What that means is that if an allotment is taken right out of a pre-existing piece of reservation land, then the water rights priority of that reservation land attaches to the allotment, and the allotee takes a proportionate share of the tribal water. There are other kind of allotments, however. There are allotments established before the reservation or around them, or, as in New Mexico, thousands that were taken out of what we call BLM land. There are 5,888 Navajo allotments. The majority are not taken from reservation land. In fact, I think there are two allotees in here that I know of. Byron Hushkon, right here, who's going to translate for me if we need to do that shortly. Byron has an allotment that predates the growth of the reservation around it. In other words, it was taken out of the public domain or BLM land. His constitutional rights are being violated because his rights were reserved when the allotment was established, not when the reservation grew around it. So the EIA is actually violating his constitutional rights, and there's an attempt to waive his property rights here. And a water right is a property right. These issues have not been addressed for a number of allotees. A general assumption has been made that the allotees will be handled by BIA, and if they're in the current boundary, within the current boundary, well, we'll take care of that. The United States Supreme Court has made it very clear in two Indian land consolidation acts, that even the smallest, smallest level of property is protected by the Constitution. The S-2109 settlement agreement says at page 21, paragraph 4.5.1, "The Navajo Nation shall have the right to divert and use any surface water from the LCR that reaches the reservation." It's a falsehood that this reserves a right to 160,000 acre-feet or any drawing. And I say, see the Winters case. Leading up to the 1908 Winters case, Fort Belknap in 1888, farmers went upstream in the 1890s. So Fort Belknap in Montana was established in 1888. The farmers started moving up on the Milk River in the 1890s. I used to work over here, I lived in Missoula, I sometimes worked on the Flathead Reservation. This next slide was not the committee's choice, it was mine. This is where I used to work. I eat, can't eat, isn't it, Muslim? And I did that for the National Bison Range in Montana. But what it afforded me to do was have an opportunity to talk to a lot of Indian people from Montana, including this young man's family. I used to ride with his father in these roundups when I was much younger and could ride much better, I'd fall off, now I'm sure. But they were from Fort Belknap. The Assiniboine and Grovont folks are over there, his dad was Grovont, they married a Salish lady over in Flathead. They talked to me about what went on because their family was involved, his dad's family was involved, in the Winters case. The white farmers kept saying, after they took all the water, Indians can use what reaches their reservation. The farmers, however, lost in the Winters case. This term reaches, or crosses, whatever term you're hearing, is actually throwing back the Navajo Nation more than 100 years in Indian water rights to before the Winters case. It shocks my family, but having studied law, I don't practice law, I teach it. It shocks me that this would be used against a tribe in the 21st century. Then we have a case or an example of a water rights quantity, priority date, and properties set in one paragraph in the agreement, then giving priority away in the next. The agreement, page 20 and 21, if you guys have, I may have to read a little bit, not much, but a little bit from it. The net go-from being first in line, back 112 years, have to get out of line, and then get back in line once Arizona approves the settlement. Thank you. Byron already had it to the page. So please bear with me while I read words, as I was taught in law school, are very, very important. Main stem Little Colorado River. "The Navajo Nation shall have the right to divert and use any surface water from the Little Colorado River that reaches the Navajo Reservation unless the surface water is attributable..." This is godly good, and I will tell you what it means here, if you haven't figured it out already. "...what is attributable to changes of use of decreed rights with respect to which a change of place or a type of use has been approved and the bed of the stream is being used as a means of convenience." Okay. Well, you get the reaches already, that applies to Navajo. But if somebody upstream has a quantity of rights, and they want to convey it to somebody downstream past the rez, you can't touch it while they use the channel of the river to convey that water. I hope that's clear. "The physical withdrawal of water from the alluvium of the Little Colorado River on the Navajo Reservation by the Navajo Nation or the United States acting in its capacity as trustee for the nation shall be considered a diversion of surface water." And I think we all understand that. If you're pumping water out of the sand next to the river, they're considering that a diversion. The Navajo Nation, this is a quantification, I was very surprised to read this. "The Navajo Nation shall have the right to divert surface water from the Little Colorado River in the quantities and with the priorities described below. These are historic irrigation projects, beaver farms, bird springs, and so on. You total all these up, Loop Farms, North Loop, 40,780 acre-feet, with priority dates going back 112 years to 1900." Now listen to this. It's thrown away in the next paragraph. You have a priority date going back as far as 1900, and now it's thrown away. Says, "Notwithstanding" sub-paragraph 4.5.1 and 4.5.2, which I just read, and the table associated with it, and the 40,780 acre-feet, "neither the Navajo Nation nor the United States acting in its capacity as trustee for the nation or allotees," there's the "allottees" again, "shall make calls or exercise rights of priority in the LCR adjudication or in any other judicial or administrative proceeding against upstream or downstream off-reservation water users, uses in the LCR basin with priority dates earlier..." Now this is where you're going to the end of the line. You've been waiting for 112 years at 1900, and all of a sudden, you're not only going to the end of the line, you're getting out of the line. "You won't complain or raise any issues against priority dates earlier than the effective date to satisfy its historic and existing or future uses." The effective date of the settlement agreement is sometime in the future when the state legislature, or the state legislature approves the settlement agreement. And I think I've made the point. They went through all the trouble to identify $160 million worth of high-priority water, then waived the priorities, and you can't, you have to get out of line and wait for the state to say they approve it, then you get back in line, but you're at the end of Some say the Navajo Generating Station is not in the agreement, but water provisions for NGS are. You can see it at page 13 of the index. Guys don't have to do it now, I'll do it myself. But if I go to page 13 of this index, and by the way, that same 100 people that put this presentation together with this index together, and you can look things up for your constituents. If somebody comes up and says, is NGS in that settlement agreement? You can use the alphabet and find NGS on page 13. It says water provisions, page 94, section 13.14. And yes, indeed, the water provisions, 34,100 acre-feet per year for NGS, have been inserted in the settlement agreement. I will go looking other things up, but you all can at your leisure. And I've really appreciated all the effort from everybody, many in this room, who helped put this index together. Okay, the LCR basin. Look how big that thing is. This is a seaquifer, the darker blue, and that's the LCR basin. Seaquifer LCR basin. That's burning in our minds, we're on top of it over here. It's underneath us, it's all over that territory, you guys know very well. Mr. Pollak et al., this says above there, say, "Navajo has unlimited use of the seaquifer." That's a nice statement. Here's what the Arizona Department of Water Resources says on its website regarding the seaquifer. "North of the Little Colorado River, the seaquifer is too deep to be economically useful or is unsuitable for most uses because of high concentrations of total dissolved solids." Twitichon is similar to that statement. For the most part, that's the portion that overlaps the Navajo Nation. So north of the Little Colorado River, most of the LCR, of the seaquifer up here, is too deep or too salty. We are on top of it today. I work for the Water Code, and we have lots of trouble finding water for construction projects and people to use. So the statement, we have unlimited use of seaquifer, has to be qualified. More knowledge of what that entails is important in decision-making. Otherwise, we'd have wells all over the place if the seaquifer was economically and chemically All right, above that, it says credibility and context. The S-2109 Act agreement credibility is an essential concern. For example, quote, "Kyle is our champion." Mr. Pollak and others have said that. Is this reasonable to ask? Consider that in 1981, in Navajo versus Arizona, it was about the McCarran Amendment's applicability to the Little Colorado River. There were some technicalities where Arizona might not have had the McCarran Amendment be applicable. That's what they were arguing about in the state. Navajo won in the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. Arizona appealed to the U.S. Supreme Court. John Kyle was, Senator Kyle, I almost said that. John Kyle was the lawyer for Arizona against the Navajo Nation, who lost. Briefly, the folks I worked with say, McCarran Amendment, what was it? And I said, it was passed in 1952, it allows the U.S. to be sued in state court, and most of you know this, in general stream adjudications. The Supreme Court in 1976 and '83 said the amendment applies to tribal rights adjudications, but federal law is used. Then everybody says, okay, we keep hearing amendment, the Care and Amendment, the Care and Amendment. Well, what's amended? It's amazing how few people, even lawyers, know what's amended. It's federal law on public lands, like parks and forests and so on. Under the title or subsection appropriations of waters, Title 43, Section, get this, 666, triple six. Now, that's in quote, that statement's in a quote, and I see it's not fully presented. I got a telephone call from a retired congressional staffer on May, or excuse me, February 15, and I met this person who worked on the Yavapai Prescott Water Rights Settlement Act. Many years ago, he calls me maybe once or twice a year. And he called me, he said, you know what I just saw happen? I said, what? He said, I saw a type of fraud committed on the Senate floor by Senator Kyle. And he said, I know that doesn't happen. That struck me between the eyes, and to me, it was a pretty powerful word. I know what fraud is, but I thought I would look it up and clarify it for myself. Fraud is deceit or deception, trickery, intentional perversion of the truth to induce another to give up something of value or surrender a legal right, an act of deceiving or misrepresenting. He had help in this deception, and everybody knows about it. I swore to present this today. Go ahead. I was asked, who are these folks? I don't know all of them. That's Mike Foley, most of you know him. That's Senator Kyle's staff, Dr. Ruby, Senator Kyle's staff, and Mr. Paul. It's been reported to me in the last couple of days that grassroots representatives, Navajo grassroots water rights representatives, have hand-delivered copies of this article and Dr. Ruby's complaint letter addressed to Congress to 35 key members of Congress. Most of the staffs already knew and said they disagreed with, and this is not my term, and this is the words that were given to the folks that presented, underhanded conspiracy Kyle introduced S-2109 under. So my contact in Washington reminded me, "Kyle and all attorneys are bound by rules of conduct." That will include Arizona, Navajo Nation, or the American Bar Association Rule 8.4. And also, client loyalty and client informed consent are parts of the rules. 8.4 reads, as I was reminded, "It is professional misconduct to engage in conduct involving dishonesty, fraud, deceit, or misrepresentation." Now, the ladies, the ladies on the committee bent my ear quite a bit, and they said, that's not the only time. And Kyle recently told a lie, direct words from the ladies, that should have a quote around it, about women's health issues. When caught, he said, now this is a quote from him, I've seen this in print, "That was not intended to be a factual statement." So some ladies in Phoenix area put together this memorial stone for Senator Kyle, and it says, "John Kyle, hero, loving husband, and awesome lawyer, not intended to be a factual statement." So at least the ladies had a sense of humor. In 2000, the year 2000, Navajo Nation President Kelsey McGay's chief of staff, attorney Sharon Knoll, believed Kyle might have been a lawyer working the 1969 waiver of Navajo Nation rights to the Colorado River, Upper Colorado River. She felt he might have been in this very room. He'd been an attorney for a couple of years. She tried to check council records but was blocked by orders to the records branch from attorney Britt Clappam. I remember when that happened with Stanley Pollak's concurrence. You know, we still don't know. It'd be nice to put that to rest, to see if there's any chance. I'm guessing it's a low probability, she thought it was higher. So I'll begin to end this session, not the presentation, but this session. I don't know where they got this photo, young people can find things anywhere. Kyle is our champion, and this is the photo that the committee chose to represent the answer to the question. My conclusion says that Kyle is not a champion. He's a very intelligent man, I talked with him before in a water rights settlement years ago, in his office, before he had all the power he has now. He's a very intelligent man, doing his best for Arizona's currently Anglo-controlled and worried Republican Party to hobble the largest voting bloc of Democrats in Arizona. S-2109 Act agreement, the Act Agreement... S 2109 Act agreement, the Act agreement weighs billions in water-related values and severely reduces Navajo as a political and economic player in Arizona. Navajo is much better off with Kyle out of the picture. Does rejecting the Act agreement for new honest negotiations auto-trigger return to court like a dungeon for a final decree? I can't tell you how many times I've heard that on the radio, read it over and over again. And I just found in my records about eight or 10 years ago, Mr. Pollock reporting happily to the council, he got another continuance for the LCR or another adjudication, I don't remember the specifics. No, you will not go right back to court unless you want to, and you choose to. If you don't want to, you get a continuance. So it's a falsehood, and yet another attorney misrepresentation to be considered.